You only need two more people, or one more person, actually, maybe two more people. Okay, I will not call this meeting to order, so we will just start discussing the bylaws. We're still gonna follow all the normal procedures of ones and twos and stuff like that. And the POSPO is, so as we know, meetings on smoothly, but Ben, as the presenter, I will let you go first. And you're muted.
Thanks, Ken. So council will know that at the beginning of February, we met to to do a first reading of a draft bylaw, and there was quite a lot of feedback from council. And we referred all those comments to our legal counsel who have prepared us a couple of memos. One on sort of directly responding to questions that were raised at council. And another outlining the sort of possible variations within the single governing board model that has been recommended by the governance consultants. So neither of them are here today, but the governance consultants are available to call in if we have any specific questions for them. But I thought it would be easier if it's just us to kind of informally. Well, I guess it'll be formal when we come to order, but talk about the bylaws. The other thing that I'll say, I think I've sent this in an email to council, but we are going, instead of trying to have the new bylaw ratified at the annual general meeting on the 29th of March, we are instead going to wait until the spring term to hold a special general meeting likely in the second or third week of May. This means that council will not be asked to approve any bylaws at this meeting. Likely, the timeline will be at the regular meeting of council in April, which is on the 3rd. We'll be asking for approval. Board will subsequently approve in the month of April. And we can call for a special general meeting for the purpose of ratifying bylaws in May, which will make three general meetings in a year. So I'm feeling pretty good about that timeline because it takes some of the pressure out and allows us to deal with some of the more substantive issues. I guess I can keep going specifically about the bylaws. So there are basically three variations. One is the, what the governance consultants have recommended, which is an at-large election model where there are no constituencies. Any student can vote for any student for the eleven directors and the president and vice president for a 13-member board. Then sort of the second option is the so-called affirmative action model or a faculty guarantee. Maybe you could call it as well, where we keep the at-large election, but sort of have provisions in elections procedure to guarantee that as long as at least one candidate runs for each faculty, they should get onto the board. And there are sort of variations in how that can work within a single transferable vote model, STV. So it could be like an acclamation at the start if there's only one candidate from a constituency from a faculty. It could be in the middle of like the runoff process, or it could be at the end if there's a tie between two and so on. Which the consultants have sort of been advising us on how that should work. And I can follow up with more detail if there are questions. Then the third model is this ex officio model where each of the societies, the faculty societies specifically, for the six faculties, would have basically a position within the society that is a designate for the board of WUSA or council, or whatever we call it. And that would basically mean that six of the 11 non-officer directors are like directly representatives of the society's interests. And there would be sort of like, each director would have like a different position because they would have like a specific duty to their society or whatever. So I guess what I'll say generally is the advice of the governance consultants is that the affirmative action model is the least divergent from the model they have proposed for us. So it basically, it retains the best parts about the at-large election model in terms of its like representativity. And sort of like least compromise is what they want to do while achieving what council has stated as its goal of like making sure that there are faculty representatives on the highest governing body of WUSA. So I guess for transparency, my, my view on like the priority of these would be I think at-large is still the best model. Then I would say affirmative action is like the, the best compromise. And then ex officio is, it's still workable, but I think there are maybe some issues that arise from it where I think it like encourages people to like have a loyalty to a faculty society first perhaps, which I don't think is desirable. I think we can still make sure that faculty interests are looked out for without introducing that risk. It's kind of my view. So those are, those are my thoughts. Ken, please take it away for chairing.
Sure. Anyone has anything they would like to talk about here, please type one or two in the chat. Go ahead, Counselor McCree.
I'd like to respectfully disagree with a few of the president's points and also add some clarification. So like, yes, the governance consultants did say that the at-large model is the, is what they think would be best, but I think the legal advice from the lawyers was that the ex officio model is the simplest legally and has the least legal risk of violating the act. They did note there is a, a small legal risk with the at-large model. And I guess we'll be up to board to decide if that is an acceptable risk. I disagree that ex officio directors would have a loyalty to their society first since the societies like do not legally exist. Their fiduciary, the ex officio directors would have a fiduciary duty to WUSA, the organization. If they were to do something that's in the interest of their societies that is bad for the organization as a whole, that would be illegal. If we're assuming directors are going to act illegally and not in good faith, then like that's just like the, no model is going to work if we're operating under that, those assumptions. I'm a bit confused why we're entertaining the option of at-large. I think at a previous council meeting, I mean, I think it was, it might have been an informal vote, but council was pretty clear that we didn't want to go with the purely at-large model. I think that the ex officio model is the legally simplest thing to do. And I would also recommend that we should try to pass a resolution at one of the upcoming general meetings to amend the corporate charter so that in the long term, we have a bit more flexibility with how we organize the corporation and add like, add the ability to have membership classes into the letters patent to give future students who are in charge of WUSA more flexibility with how the organization is structured. But in the, and then they can move to a, you know, more pure solution of just electing or just of, instead of having society positions, it just be directly under WUSA, but in the interim and tell them we're able to do that. I think that the society ex officio model is the best way to accomplish what I think council indicated in the previous meeting, which is making sure that all students are represented. I know that there are some quirks to work out with the ex officio model, but there are also the same quirks with like the at-large model, like how do you handle students who are in multiple faculties? Like SE students or math CPA students, I think. I think CPA is math and arts. No matter what we do, like unless we were to amend the letters like patent to add multiple membership classes, there's going to be like some tricky things to work out. But I think either way, like it's resolvable issues, but I do think it's easiest to resolve with the ex officio model.
Thank you, Counselor McCree. Counselor Yank has a direct response, and then it'll follow by President Easton's direct response, followed by VP Emo's direct response.
Yeah, I just want to provide my interpretation of what was written by the lawyers. I don't believe they made a clear comparison between the ex officio and affirmative action models. I think they just laid out the feasibility of either. I don't think they made a recommendation as to which one was more more congruent with the act and less likely to put us in legal trouble. I think they both just talked about they're feasible and they have issues that need to be worked out, which I agree with. I think I'm in agreement with Counselor McCree that we should probably be looking closely at the two other models, the ex officio and affirmative action models. And that's it for the direct response.
Thank you. Next, we have President Easton.
Thanks, Ken. So first thing is I think we might have a quorum, Mike, if you could verify that. And then just for clarity about why we included the draft bylaw for at-large is just because the lawyers, like we had asked them just for two based on the sort of affirmative action and ex officio based on the direction of council the last time. They included the at-large draft for just completeness because they have been, like, we've been having to sort of collaborate with the governance consultants. So that was the reason for which they prepared an at-large bylaw for us to consider and included it in the, in the writing. And just a comment on the, the, like, to expand on like the ex officio society, like, comment I made about like loyalties, like, I, I agree that the fiduciary responsibility of a director will, will be to, like, to WUSA itself and like the societies that legally speaking are, are WUSA, but I think there is still like a, even aside from like the, like legal thing, I think there's like a social risk that it might be incurred where like, for example, because like, I think it would be easy to see that like a society's representative on the board should be accountable to the society. And like, it could look like, you know, a society council passing a resolution to bind them to vote in a certain way regardless of.
There's a POI in the chat, sorry to interrupt.
Bet you finish his point, because I'm patient.
Okay, go ahead, Ben.
There's, the, the, the risk of like accountability of society representatives, I think, is like maybe not desirable. And I, I really, I, I cringe to make this comparison, but because like WUSA is not a country. So like, a lot of the appeals to like, you know, national governments and stuff are often not great comparisons. But in like, you know, the federation of students, I, it doesn't, there are ways to include this sort of like constituent, like thing, the groups which federated to make this association without them explicitly being on the board. And I, I think that we can still like accomplish those things through the at-large and affirmative action models. So yeah, that's, that's all.
Thank you. We could go ahead with your POI.
I just like, I would, I mean, maybe because I'm just not sure about the faculty, like, would you be by like, I guess faculty, like faculty part, because like, I know there's like for arts, there's there's art student, you give it within that, there's like RASK, which I'm here for, and then there's S Ju. And I just want to, just so I can get more clarity on what I'm voting on later.
Sure. Can I respond, Ken?
Go ahead, Ben.
Yeah, so the idea with the ex officio model specifically is that each faculty society, so the six faculties, so that excludes satellite campuses and the affiliated and federated institutes of Waterloo, so St. Jerome's, Renescent, Connor Grable, et cetera. It would be the six faculties each have a position, which is the mathematics representative on the board of WUSA, or whatever we call it. Then students who are registered in those faculties would vote for that position. In addition to the at-large, the remaining five and the president and the vice president, for a total of 13. So the, the, yeah, if, if that clarifies your question.
It does.
Okay.
Thank you, Ben. Next, we have a direct response from Stephanie.
Wow, I'm in trouble again to say my full name.
Sorry, point of order, Ken. Mike had raised a hand.
Oh, I didn't.
No, I, don't worry about it. Steph, go ahead.
Okay. So like, I, I, I understand like the sort of approach of that we shouldn't assume that people are acting in, in bad faith. But at the same time, I, I think it's important to know, sort of recognize that you could create this like ideal model and interpretation of how things are going to run. But there is going to be some sort of wrenches that come in the way that could disrupt how that system works. And I would, you know, argue that we should be anticipating these risks and sort of building, I guess, different ways to to deter them from happening. Like, I, I don't know, I think like a number of safety nuts are sort of important here. But I think with the at-large or with the, the affirmative action model, you know, I, I feel like it makes it a little bit clearer to the people who are running and who, like, to the people who those folks will be accountable to, what their role is. Right? Because like you could tell the board member who ran that this is a role, this is the way they should be treating it. But the society, you know, like average people in the societies may feel differently about that. And also the people who elected them might feel differently about that. And I, I think it's really important to sort of have like a standard understanding of what that person's role is to be doing instead of a misinterpretation. And I guess, at least from my understanding, why we want to have faculty representation on these different groups. I, I see it as like their ability to understand sort of like the, the unique subculture needs of those communities. Like, the point is to have someone who is like, you know, interacts with environment students every day or something along the lines of that. I don't know. So like, like, I'm not necessarily sure if it necessitates having a relationship with like ESS, for example. Right? And, and like, it also boils down to if we're talking about like an advocacy committee or advocacy working groups. If those, if the decisions are being made there, then it's more important to have the representation of the faculty societies or if we're doing something related to faculty societies, like which would take place in COPs. Like, I, I think it's sort of like, which model we choose will be partially dependent on what level of decision-making is happening at the board level itself and what is being deferred to other sort of groups there. Anyways.
Thank you, VP Emo. Sorry. Next, we have Counselor Kami with the one.
Yeah, so first things first, a little bit of a logistical thing. Everywhere in all of the draft bylaws and also on the memo, when the faculty of health is mentioned, we are referred to as the faculty of applied health sciences. The faculty has changed its name. And also when we're discussing the ex officio model, the Health Faculty Society is no longer the Applied Health Sciences undergraduate members. We are the Association of Health Students undergraduate members. So just a little bit of, I, I, I know it was just a mistake because we only changed it like a year ago, but just wanted to get it on the record that we should probably have our real name on these legal documents. And then I would like to express my support for the affirmative action model. I agree with what people have said before that this affirmative action model is the closest to the at-large membership and also ensures that there is faculty representation. And I think it could just be a little bit easier for elections to run under the affirmative action model rather than the ex officio model. And I believe that the issues that were mentioned in like the memo about the affirmative action model, we can easily work around. So I would just like to reaffirm my support for that model.
Thank you, Counselor Kami. Next, we have Counselor Yank, go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to first state that my, I believe the support for the affirmative action model is what, based on what I talked to with my constituents, is the most reasonable model for having adequate representation and fills a lot of their desires to have someone from their faculty connected to the governing body of WUSA. I think there are two issues with the ex officio model. One of which is, both of which could be resolved, but I think, or make it a lot more difficult than just doing it from the back of the ball. And that is, we do have students who are strictly not part of their faculty society. I think two examples that I think of off the top of my head are applied finance, I'm sorry, accounting, financial management, AFM. I don't believe they are directly within the ASU. And similarly for architecture students, they explicitly do not pay MSO fees and are not voting members of the engineering society. So that will be problematic if these members, these ex officio positions are within the societies because you can't have non-society members voting for a society position. And I think my second half of the concern with the ex officio model is are we leaving it up to societies to run the elections? And if not, are the societies comfortable with WUSA running an election with their own procedures for a society position? Even if at the end of the day, it's mostly focused on WUSA, it's kind of with the societies to decide how they want their elections to be run, if it is a society position, no matter what happens. So they need to be comfortable with that as well. So if any society presidents or if the president can know if they have any input on that, that'd be great.
Thank, thank you. Does anyone else? Okay, Counselor McCree, go ahead.
I guess I just want to make one quick note before I get into some more new ones' points. Throughout the bylaws, they use like the phrase he or she several times. I don't like this. It's awkward. And I just prefer if we could reword it to just use language that's a bit more inclusive of non-binary identities. And so as to the more, I guess, the bigger points, I don't quite agree that I, I think if you feel like society, or if you feel alignment to societies, I think you're looking at this in the wrong way. Well, like, there might be a risk that, that, you know, faculty representatives feel like some kind of social alignment to their faculty. I don't think it's, I don't think there's a bigger risk of this happening in the ex officio model versus the at-large model. Or the affirmative action model. Because, you know, many students, most of their friends are in their faculty. And of course, they might feel like social pressure to look out for, you know, their own faculty because that's who their friends are, that's who they're talking to all the time. But I disagree this would happen like because they're elected by the students and the faculty, just kind of a reality of like, you know, human social interaction. I don't think any kind of board structure will really significantly impact this. It may be that like the social pressure, which again, I think is independent from the structuring of board, may change how some directors vote sometimes, but I think on matters where fiduciary duty is relevant, the legal duties of directors will easily override any like social pressures they might feel. And for like non-fiduciary matters, having a balanced makeup of board that includes one student elected from each faculty will make sure that the decisions of board aligns with the views of the students at large. And in terms of, you know, the societies, I would say, you know, we can put something in the bylaws or societies that we use that prevent societies from, you know, binding these representatives. I think rather than viewing them as society representatives, I think it's more accurate to view them as student representatives that are sent by the societies to look out for the members of that faculty, not to look out for the interests of the society itself. Now, there are plenty of society positions where, you know, you're looking out for the students, not for the actual organization. Like as Masoc VPA, I don't look out for the interests of Masoc itself. I look out for the interests of mass students. We have the Masoc president looks out for the interests of the society itself. Rather than, yeah, and so these members would be, would not be there to look out for the interests of societies, they'd be there to look out for the interests of students. I agree, like, there are some nuances with things, like if you're not in any society. But I think, I think the, by framing it as, you know, representatives of the students in the faculty that the society sends, that kind of solves the problem because it, because it's, because if you're looking out for the interests of the faculty, not the society itself, we can say, you know, any student who's registered in this faculty can vote in that election. So, you know, in engineering, we can say, okay, architecture students are allowed to vote in only this election because this is MSO looking out for students in the engineering faculty, not for, you know, MSO itself. Or, you know, similar with ASU, and I think AFM was not part of ASU or something like that. And we, we can handle those things that way. And I think that's a lot simpler than trying to figure out like, if you're a software engineering student, how do, what faculty do you count as in this at-large model? Like, that's a real, like, it might be like a kind of simple question, but I don't see how you can clearly sort that out. Because those students are members of two faculties, like equally. Some students might feel a closer alignment to one faculty than the other, which is why I think having them elected at large could lead to a situation where you have someone who's like supposed to be the math student person who feels no alignment to the math faculty and isn't involved in the math faculty and doesn't talk to a lot of students in the math faculty. Or, you know, vice versa, just depending on, you know, that specific software engineer, like what kind of, you know, groups they're involved in. Whereas by doing it, you know, with this, by saying, you know, it's a position, it's something that the societies find a student in their faculty to send to WUSA to look out for the students in their faculty. But it's not looking out for the society itself. They don't necessarily only elected by members of the society. It's just, you know, the societies exist to, you know, look out for students in their faculty. Then they will, you know, have a position under them that's, you know, kind of like at arm's length. So like their councils and things like that cannot bind these directors. And then they're sent to WUSA to look out for the students, not for the society. We have COPs to look out for the societies. Maybe we should talk more about COPs, but that's outside of the scope of this meeting. But I think by, you know, looking at as, these are, these are representatives of the students from the faculty that just happened to be sent by the society because of like some legal nonsense that, again, I think we should fix in the long term. I think that's a better way to look at this. And I think that ex officio models really just like the simplest thing, that's the best for students. Talking to students, they don't like the idea of like their math representative not being elected by math students. It seems very weird to them and they don't trust that this would lead to an outcome where this is a student who understands their issues. It might be, it might not be. But by making sure it's the students in the faculty who send the, who send the people who look out for the students in the faculty, that this problem is solved. The ex officio model does that.
Thank you, Counselor McCree. We have direct responses from VP Don.
Thanks. I think that we, with these, with this implementation of a new governance model, have a really incredible opportunity to sort of re-envision how we understand what it means for a student to represent other students and how we think about what elements are meaningful in, like who a student representative is elected by and who they appeal to and all of that. I personally would feel a lot more comfortable shying away from any model that has individual directors up for election with only one constituency of the student body. Because you necessarily have then a dynamic where those directors have to appeal to their body of, of electors. If you have a model where any individual director is not up for election with the rest of the student body, they have no, you know, yes, they have an accountability to the organization, but there is a degree of, you know, it's student politics, there's voting involved, there's appealing to your electoral body involved. And so, you know, you, you are. you are, you throw a wrench into the idea of a council that is made up of, you know, everybody who is looking after the interests of everybody who is a member in WUSA. Um, one thing that I like to compare to is, you know, when you're a faculty representative, um, you're in a program and a lot of faculties have, you know, programs, societies or program clubs. And most of your friends are probably in your program and they're probably the people that you leaned on the most when you were getting elected. But just because somebody is from a different program in your faculty, when they come to you with a problem, you don't brush them off, you try to understand their problem and you do your best to bring forward that issue and address it in the way that you know how to. And I, I think that we should be approaching um the makeup of this new council with a similar generosity. Um, I, I think that there is a lot to be gained from having, having faith that people are decent and people will listen to anybody who comes to them. Um, obviously there are a lot of nuances in each faculty and you know, it's not easy for somebody outside of a faculty to immediately grasp what's going on in that faculty, but that doesn't mean that that'll never happen. Like it doesn't mean that just because somebody from a faculty isn't on the board, that those issues will never get brought up, that there won't be efforts made to either understand those issues or to, when appropriate, like directly consult. Um, you know, that's why, that's part of why societies exist. The societies exist to be bodies that other stakeholders across campus can go to to say, hey, help us understand this issue, what do your members need? Um. You know, as long as we have our societies around, there's no reason why an at-large board, or at least a board that is council board, sorry, I've been using them interchangeably. Um, that is elected by all students in WUSA, whether that's the at-large model or the faculty guarantee model, both of those have individual directors elected by everyone in the student body. And I think that's really valuable in setting up, setting us up for success with any individual director being mindful that they are responsible to the needs of every single student in WUSA. Um, and I, I can't in good faith support the ex officio model over these other models, because I think that it is setting us up for a divided board. Um, and just overall having a much less ideal system than we could, that we have the option to make right now.
Thank you, Counselor Abi Dong. Next, we have Counselor Yang. And before actually let you go, Counselor Yang, I'll just read a message from someone in the chat saying, happy birthday, Abby.
I think Vincent had P O I. Also, happy birthday, Abby.
Yes, we should all sing happy birthday for Abby at the end of this meeting, uh, but we'll do it at the end, not in the beginning. Um. Vincent, go ahead with your P O I.
Yeah, um, happy birthday, Abby. Um. So just, I wanted to ask a clarification question because it seems there's a bit of confusion in our discussion. Um, with the ex officio model, is there anything preventing the elections from happening under WUSA along with all of the other elections, like legally speaking?
I kind of gonna answer this as unless Ben wants to, because I asked this question to the lawyers in the last council meeting and also at board, and their response was it might be possible, but it will have to be governed by the society's M O U, because that's what defines our relationship with societies. Uh, so from what I can understand from their point was that we can't make a policy saying you need to follow these procedures or these steps. Like as a couns- policy of council or WUSA, but it can be part of the M O U. But I'll let Ben go and respond if there's something like I might have missed or said wrong.
No, no, that, that's good, Ken. And I, I think like, I mean, ultimately like, I mean, we already administer societies' elections anyway. Um, though, like, yeah, to Ken's point, like the way that the society's M O U is like that we acknowledge that they're basically like unincorporated associations, which like that's something we'd have to figure out. Um. But likely it would be WUSA administering the elections through our platform anyway.
Thank you. Next, follow-up with their P O I, Vincent.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure I'm saying, so we could put in the society's M O U that the society's representative positions are, you know, actually representing the students in the society, not the society itself. And that they will be elected through WUSA, under WUSA's election rules, along with all the other directors, WUSA directors. And so basically as a student, from as far as a student can tell, they wouldn't really necessarily know it's a society position unless they read like the bylaws. Is that accurate?
Can I respond, Ken?
You should go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think that, that's fair, Vincent, uh, like a fair characterization of how it could look. Um. Of course, I think students would be aware that they're voting for a faculty representative because it would be like uh, an election only open to them and it would probably indicate the faculty in question. But otherwise, yeah, it's.
I meant that they wouldn't necessarily know the society part.
Um, so I, that's actually like, they, they may not. And, and I think that something, this is like maybe a bit derivative, so forgive me if it's not responding to a point of inquiry, but we're not in order anyway, but like the distinction between societies and faculties, I think is an important one. Um, where like you're representing the students in a faculty versus representing a society in the, like, I think my concerns about like people having like this dual loyalty or dual interest is that the societies, like as entities themselves, you know, have their own thing. And I know you, Vincent, mentioned that like cops can deal with that in the presidents and stuff, but.
Um. Sorry, Ben, we have a point of order. Go ahead, Edward.
Can we use the speaking list?
Yes. Um, okay, so next we had Edward as a direct response, I think.
Yeah, um, I guess this was direct response to Councilor Macri's original point, but we thought of past that, but I think the, I think with the M O U's is technically feasible is a question, but the other question is, M O U's had to be created upon jointly by both the society and WUSA. It's not something we can single-handedly enforce. If the societies want to have full control over all their own positions that they're being elected, then they have that right and they can not agree to it. So that's why I raised the question, are the society presidents who are here today comfortable with this idea? And I guess secondly is, is it even possible for a society to be running an election that has non-society members vote? Because like I said, architecture students are firmly not a member of N S O C. They don't have any voting rights within N S O C. Will we require an M O U that they had to carve out changes to their constitution so that they make architecture students part of their voting body for certain things? It feels like a lot of additional work on each faculty of the society to make this happen. And trying to do it underhandedly and make it just so that it's a faculty position only in, a side position only in name, but practically to WUSA and kind of rely on students not recognizing that. I feel like we shouldn't be building a new governance model based on deception and hiding information from students, in my personal opinion. So with that all said, I think the affirmative action model allows us to have more control over making these clarifications, like you mentioned students that come from two faculties. That is something that can be set up in the bylaws or in our procedures to be specifically resolved, like they have to choose one faculty to run for. Or, you know, they have to declare the faculty that they want to represent at the time of their nomination. Things of that manner that are a lot more simple to sort out than rather to try and hammer out an M O U and force each society to implement in their own governing documents.
Thank you, Counselor, um, Yang. Uh, Counselor Macri, before I let you directly respond, I'm gonna let Mike go and speak.
Hello, um, uh, just, this is just sort of like a helper comment on Edward's point. Um, yes, architecture students are like not overseen by N S O C, uh, which is something that would uh be looked at. But I think when we get the voters list, so like the big list that we get from central like finance and central uh registrar's office, like architecture students still fall under the faculty, which is why like we would probably, even though N S O C is the main representative body of the faculty, um, the voters list would still include those students. So it would just need to be some sort of, not really side deal, but like, uh, they would still be included and able to be part of whatever voting happens for whatever N S O C, uh, or engineering, no, not the society, whatever engineering seat would exist.
Thank you, Mike. Um. Next, we have Counselor Macri as a direct response, I believe. Yes.
Yeah, um, as for the matter of if the societies would agree on this, I think the best thing to do is like ask them, like, we can go to cops, be like, okay, council is considering two options. One, we have a um student representative position that's nominally, you know, like, you know, de jour under the societies, but like de facto is a WUSA position that you won't control. Are you comfortable with this? And if the societies are on board with that, I say we go ahead with it. If the societies are not okay with that, then like, I guess we don't and tell them the alternative is that the students, you know, the student representatives for their faculty are not going to be elected by the members of their faculty at all. Ask cops, what do you prefer? Um. I also disagree with the, with um the counselors characterization that this is, would be some, that, you know, the de facto, that the ex officio model is some kind of deception. I think that's a very dishonest characterization of what I was saying. I don't mean like that students would be tricked. I just mean, you know, most students are not intimately familiar with our governing documents. Like, I'm sure there are lots of students who probably don't know that the faculty societies are part of WUSA. Um, and when I said like students wouldn't know that a society position, I meant like in the same way, you know, students maybe don't know that N S O C and Masoc, um, and all the other faculty societies are part of WUSA. Um, I didn't mean that it would in any way be hidden. I just meant like, you know, if it's running with all the WUSA elections, it would feel, you know, like it's, you know, a part of a, part of WUSA. I don't mean that we'd be trying to like trick students in some way by like mislabeling what it is. I just meant like it would be operated and run, kind of like it's part of WUSA. Um, and if the students really cared, they can look at the governing documents and see it's like nominally under a society. Um, in the same way that students who want to know how their faculty society works can look at governing documents and see that the society is a part of WUSA. It's not some kind of like trick or deception. It's just kind of, most students aren't looking at our governing documents. And if they see, oh, math WUSA representative is getting elected with all the other with WUSA representatives, they'll probably assume that is part of WUSA. There's no confusion for the students that like they need to think about, oh, nominally, this is a faculty position, like, like no students like don't need to worry about that. They can look at the bylaws and governing documents and see if they want, but I don't think any student, it's not something that will confuse students was the point.
Thank you, Counselor Macri. Um, yes, I will go next. Um, as Deputy Speaker, I get to sit on cops whenever cops is making decisions that on behalf of uh council as a whole, I've also been to a lot of cops meeting when the most recent society's M O U was being negotiated. And the one thing I've noticed is as presidents change over, let's say, three years, and every time you're renegotiating M O U, things that were settled down in the previous iteration of the M O U become contentious again. And since this is something that's literally the cornice of our governance process, which is going to be like the ex officio model, if we go with that, I think it will jeopardize our organizations working because some society, some president, let's say five years down the line could be like, nope, and they'll be like, I'm, I'm not going, like, society's M O U, I believe, have to be passed unanimously by all, all the societies and WUSA. And they could hold that up. And I think, I don't think that's something we should be putting our organization into that kind of situation. Um. I had a second point, but looking at all the chat, somehow my mind got distracted enough that I don't remember what my second point was. Um, so I will let Counselor Macri directly respond.
Um, so if, like President said in the chat, societies M O U's are negotiated like every three, five years, something like that. Um, like I said at the beginning, I think that regardless of what we decide here, we should seek to amend the letters patent to allow the flexibility of multiple membership classes. Um, and I think, you know, I would expect that by the time renegotiating society's M O U comes around again, if that would probably be done by then and we wouldn't have to continue with this, like, you know, either of these, so I admit both of these solutions are kind of weird and clunky. Um, I think this ex officio model is less clunky and less weird. Um, but neither of them are ideal. Ideally, we would just have multiple membership classes. I see like either of these models as kind of like temporary Band-Aid solutions and tell them we can amend the corporate charter to have multiple membership classes and and set this up properly. Um, and I think that, you know, with the, how, you know, the, if it's, you know, that long between society M O U renegotiations, I don't agree that there's a significant risk as long as we are see, like of what, um, um, Counselor Sharma was saying, as long as we do seek to amend the letters patent. Um. Yeah.
Thank you. Next, we have a direct response from VP Dong.
Hello, um, I, I just wanted to note that I think that there's um a lot of conversation, obviously, about the different ways that an ex officio model or some later appearance of a constituency model can exist, but I, I honestly don't see why it's desirable. Um, and I think that we should keep that in for counselors who aren't speaking right now and, you know, who are maybe still trying to make their minds up about how you vote later, if we do do any votes. Um. I, I guess I have said my piece about how, you know, h- having constituencies or constituency-esque situations, it's not necessarily desirable. It splits our governing body. It naturally um forces some directors to align with an only appeal to part of our student body. That's not a good dynamic to set ourselves up with. Um, you know, yes, it's within our power to ask uh, the membership to, for permission to like amend our letters patent and everything, but why is that desirable? It's like further dividing our ability to discuss the needs of students and further dividing our ability to, you know, collaboratively work together and vote on things because of how well we think they'll do by the student body as a whole, instead of only looking out for some segment of the student body, which is the only segment that'd be able to vote for an individual director and i- if you're like uh, elected from a constituency. It's not desirable. Um, and I don't think that we should be trying to, I, I don't think it's necessary to preserve that. And I don't think that it's to the detriment of um, the body whatsoever to move away from what we've had as the status quo. Just because it's the way it is right now, doesn't mean that that's what we have to move forward with. And I, I invite counselors to sort of rethink um, what is actually important in a central representative body for students and to think about the models accordingly.
Thank you, VP Dong. Um. Counselor Macri, I'm gonna let you directly respond. I think I'm gonna let President Easton speak one, and then I'm gonna ask people who haven't spoken yet to speak, because I think this conversation ha- kind of has been taken over by just a few people on this call, and I want more people to speak up on this. Go ahead, President Easton.
Thanks, Ken. Um, so I'll start this by saying that I understand that this meeting is not in order and there is like a limited ability for us to make like binding decisions, but I would like to get a direction from the group that is assembled here on their opinion between the three models. Um, because I think like as we sort of work towards ratification in May, uh, narrowing what we're trying to do will help us get there. Um, so I think some direction on the three models would be helpful. And even if we some direction on the three models would be helpful, and even if we still like formally have to vote, let's say, at the March regular meeting, um, uh, sorry, uh, we can still formally make this decision later, but I think it would be helpful for the executives and for the board to know like what is likely to be acceptable by council and, and the people here um, can certainly like indicate that to us, I think. Then to speak specifically to the like ex officio question and sort of like amending the charter to create different membership classes and sort of to Catherine's point about, like, dare I say, being innovative, um, but thinking, like, be open minded about what it means to have like representation from the faculties and, and like the diverse groups of students in their different, like administrative places. I think amending the charter to create different membership classes is, is really not a desirable thing for us to do. I'll read briefly. So the first line of the charter for the following objects, that is to say, to promote the welfare and interests of the students of the University of Waterloo in all matters respecting their common interests. And I think that it is very important that WUSA be focused singularly on that, on all students. And I, I think, like, a lot of this governance review has been motivated by, like, by us recognizing the need for more simplicity in what we do. And I think it's like, it should be clear, like, of course, the societies, including the, uh, the satellite campus and affiliated college societies exist to promote the interests of their specific, their, the students in their specific constituency, and they do a very good job of that. Because they're, you know, closer to the ground and, and there is sort of like a degree of separation. But the purpose of WUSA is to be that kind of higher order body for all of the areas of common interest among all of the students. And I think creating membership classes and like defining like, no, you're a part of this group or you're a part of this group, like, it's semantic. And like, you might say it's not meaningful because of that, but like, I, I really disbelieve that. I think it is very important that, like, the singular motivation of the board uh, in, in any model, but especially in this new model, is that it be focused on the interest of all students, which is why I think it's, I'll reiterate what I said earlier, that I think the at-large model is best because it allows students to pick what they find meaningful to them. However, I understand the need, or the desire to have, you know, a diverse representation of faculty. And I think the affirmative action model is like sort of the winning compromise that, that gets the best of both worlds. Um, and, and kind of gets us over the hump and, and is probably the logistically simplest to implement. So, uh, so Kenan, I'll go back to you. Uh, I would like to do like a straw poll just between the three models at some point.
Um, thanks, Ben. I think I'm gonna do that sometime around eleven twenty-five, thirty, like, people haven't spoken yet, also have their say. Uh, next, we have, okay, they were there. Um, Representative Kina, go ahead.
Uh, so I'm not going to speak on which model I want because I'm getting confused as Ben, it probably might note. I just know, and I, I know I've had, um, prior discussions with President Easton about what I enjoy being part of WUSA. Uh, so I, no, personally, I don't have any interest as being like the, like, probably director. But I enjoy being like on the committees for WUSA, and I enjoy being like an advocate for like at least Renaissance and sometimes Artson. That, so I'm not sure exactly what model I want because I'm very confused because words confuse me. And with all this discussion going around, it's just very confusing. I just know I enjoy being like a member of WUSA, the counselor, like on committees and helping that, but that's just my take.
Thank you, the Kina. Next, we will go to the other Counselor Sharma.
Hi, so I just wanted to make a quick comment. Um, I somewhat in agree with President Easton, so, um, I do think the affirmative action model is probably the best. I was officially originally leaning towards the ex officio model. But I do believe WUSA's role is to represent all, all faculties, everybody equally. So having faculty members that are elected by the entire um, student body is quite important because they will represent faculty interests as lo- along with the fact that they're also accountable to the entire student body and not just like, for example, science students, while also like understanding the issues that science students may go through, because most likely the people that are running for their particular pa- faculty positions are going to be running for um, their particular faculties. So a science student wanting to be a board member is most likely going to run for the faculty of science. So I think the, it's sort of the best of both worlds of where like you do have faculty interests being represented and those board members recognizing what those particular subcultures issues are, along with also being accountable to the rest of the student body, which is essentially what WUSA is for. And these board members that are going to be faculty representatives can also like interact with the, with the faculty societies, um, which just further like deepens that connection with WUSA and like allows the faculties to also like uh, consolidate any issues that they have based on them, and then also again, being accountable to the rest of the student body. So I do believe the affirmative action is the best of both worlds, sort of.
Thank you, Counselor Sharma. Next, we have Counselor the code. I hope I pronounced the last name correct, and I'm assuming that was the last name, not the the entire, I won't try to pronounce it, I'm sorry.
Unfortunately, the entire thing is the last name, but I know what you mean. Um, the only thing I want to add to this discussion would just, it's my reason for relating more towards affirmative action and the, more importantly, probably the at-large model is that looking at the scope of what we do in our group and our large council or board meetings, rarely does it ever have to do with a single faculty. And the only reason I think that that's important is that if we're looking at making, at, at including societies or making any kind of point of having specific society or faculty as part of our voting model or as part of our, the way we make up our board, is that while we, yes, check in with societies and check in with every single faculty, and we trust that people will most likely represent their faculty interests, it's also important to note that those, those faculties and societies are of course impacted, but rarely be sole topic of discussion, um, or, or kind of be sole and product. So to me, again, driving home President Easton's point and, and, um, VP Dong's point, that having board members elected by all students puts so much more faith in the fact that those board members will represent not only the interests of their faculties, but will represent the interest of all students regarding other things, when we are talking about things like housing or tuition or the health plan. Those things are not faculty or society specific. They're for all students, and as such, whether your opinion is faculty driven or not, it comes back to something that affects all students. And as such, people should be elected on the basis that they care about those issues more than they care about or represent their own faculties, because in the end, it's never going to be only for one faculty. It's for all students, as it's, again, has been mentioned. So that's just something that I wanted to mention more specifically because it hasn't been yet.
Thank you. Um, next, we have VP Schwartz.
Thank you. I'll, I'll be quick. Uh, I just wanted to sort of jump in and, and give my thoughts because I haven't said to anyone in this meeting yet, but, uh, I, I broadly agree with everything the last two speakers, um, said. Um, that's sort of where I'm at as well. I think that, the sort of affirmative action faculty guarantee model is, is the best when we're looking at, um, you know, uh, meeting all of the needs of our governance, while also meeting the needs, um, and the expressed interests of, of our students. I think it's really is the best solution. Um, and I think it provides us a, a lot of unique value. So when the time comes, I'm going to be voting for, uh, uh, the affirmative action model over anything else. And, uh, yeah, sure, sure, I'm at.
Thank you, VP Schwartz. Um, it's last six minutes before I said we'll go down the straw poll thingy. So I would ask people who haven't spoken to please give your ideas. If no one says anything, I will start the girl call. Because I think this is an important enough thing as a duty of a counselor to be speaking on what the governance for our organization is going to look like for the next X number of years. So please give your viewpoint, even if it's like a single line saying I support this, or I'm not really sure where I stand, but I'm still thinking about it, so at least know that there are people who actually care about this and are trying to be part of the conversation here. Go, but Ben, I saw you raise your hand first, and I'll let Amelia go after you.
Yeah, I was just, I, you can let Amelia go first. I just saw Vicky had a question, and there were no people in the speaking terms, so I was gonna offer to try to clarify, but.
Okay. Uh, go ahead, Counselor Kamming.
Yeah, I think my fellow counselors, um, throughout this whole conversation have kind of said all of my viewpoints, so again, I'll just reiterate that. I do support the affirmative action model as, um, the best of both worlds.
Thank you, Counselor Kamming. Uh, Wiki, feel free to ask your question if you have anything specific you'd like to ask.
I'm just so confused because, just confusion, but hopefully Benjamin or Ben will help clarify to help guide, because I'm just confused.
Do you have a, like, are you confused about the question that Canon would like us to vote on, or can, like?
I'm confused of like, if like I expected to vote on a model, which model fits what I want per se, because I'm just confused.
Right. Um, I mean, this is, this is definitely a departure from like the, the, the existing system of a board and a council, like it, it, it is a, it is a drastic change. Um, I, I like personally, I find it helpful, like when I'm thinking about, or I, I try to think of this like governance system when I'm not in it, which is maybe like, you know, like graduation goggles or whatever they call it, where you like start looking fondly at things, but like, eh, when, especially when we're thinking at the level of like bylaws and sort of like the, the whole system, it's like, I don't know. I don't really know what I'm saying. I, it's, it, it's a big change. I don't know. It's like trying to think of it, like when we are not in it, what are we leaving behind for people, like? Which, you know, like we've been conditioned to think about governance in a very specific way because of how it works now. But we sort of need to be imaginative about like what it can look like. Just maybe I'm just saying fluff, but.
I'm gonna add a small point to this, um, in a sense, and then I'll ask people to speak up, please, uh, which is, when we were doing the WUSA rebranding, there were a lot of people who were involved in those conversations, had a lot of strong feelings about keeping it as Feds, in a sense, and the, we were all afraid that it would just confuse people more, but I think at, we've come at this point where most of the people who are in university now don't even know what Fed says. They just recognize WUSA as a single body, not a single body, but like WUSA as the thing that represents them in a sense, and I think we do need to think about five years down the line, people are not going to be really thinking about this old model. It's, they, they want to be like, oh, like, yeah, that was the thing that we, we should still have kind of a thing, in a sense, and we, they'll not be having, comparing these two things in a sense, and they will be like, this model works. Hopefully that model works. Um, but yeah. Mike, go ahead. Uh, so Mike's gonna, I guess, put some top row questions before we ask you to the straw poll. And this will also be part of the straw poll, I guess, in a sense. Uh, oh, Mary, go ahead. Sorry, Mike, there's one in the chat. And Winston, okay, I'll give you your two before we do the straw poll. Go ahead, President Siversma.
Sorry, uh, this is gonna be a silly question, but, uh, I think I've kind of lost track of like what the options are, like the quick summary of like what each model is, if we just like to sort of go over that. Um, because I, I know like, we keep on talking, but like sometimes I think I I, I've forgotten what they are. Um, and sort of like, I think personally, some of, like, um, see, like, some, like, I was like, oh, yeah, that's a good point. That seems a good point. But like, oh wait, I have like, but I, then I'm getting confused of the mapping of like which model is under like which name, and so I apologize for, uh, having to re-go over this.
I will let President Easton answer that.
Yeah, no, no problem, Mary. It's definitely, uh, yeah, it's a lot of words. Um, uh, so essentially, the, the three models that we are sort of considering right now are, first is the at-large model, which was recommended by the governance consultants, where there are no constituencies. Any student can vote for any student to be on the board of directors, and it's a single transferable vote. You vote for more than one person. And there's like this runoff process where you have to build a majority and so on. Um, the sort of like, the other end of that is this sort of, uh, ex officio model where we have a hybrid of some directors who are elected in this at-large process. It would be five of them. Uh, then the other six directors, uh, who are not the president and the vice president, um, are elected in, within a faculty, basically. So you'd have a math director or a engineering director, and then sort of we've been discussing that if it lives within the society, the election to each of those specific positions, there are some students who don't belong to a, a faculty, and that kind of issue was discussed. Um, then kind of the middle ground is the affirmative action model. Um, maybe not middle ground, but affirmative action model is an at-large election where anybody can vote for anybody. But then we basically have a clause in our elections procedure that guarantees that as long as one person from each faculty runs, they will get a seat. Um, to guarantee that there be one member from each faculty. Uh, yeah, so affirmative action in that sense. Or like the, the governance consultants have called it the, the faculty guarantee, which I think is maybe a bit easier, because I think people get their back up about affirmative action. Is that it's the same thing, but hopefully that clarifies kind of the three things that we're actively considering.
Uh, does that answer your question, President Siversma?
Yep, thanks.
Perfect. Um, Counselor Mac, you will have your two, and then we will move on to Mike's hot takes, followed by a straw poll. Call, sorry.
I'd like to, um, respond to what, um, Vice President Dong said earlier about why I think that we should have constituencies in the first place and why they need to be elected by the students in each constituency. We should have constituencies because WUSA should be structured in alignment with the reality of how the university operates and how students experience the university. The university gives a lot of autonomy to faculties, more so than at other schools. And so the experiences of students, even if not directly related to their faculty, will vary wildly. Um, if this weren't the case, I would agree that constituencies were unnecessary, but it is the case that the experiences of students vary wildly by faculty, even outside of so-called faculty issues. To give a quick example, in EAC, we've talked a little bit about textbooks and those kinds of resources. In the math faculty, I've never had a required textbook. Um, now textbooks aren't a faculty issue, but the experiences of students on something like having to buy textbooks is going to vary a lot. Even though it's not a faculty issue. I think it's important to understand the history of WUSA and how we got here. We are a federation, not like some kind of central, all-powerful government. We were formed from the constituent societies. Constituencies are the reason why WUSA exists. WUSA was formed in nineteen sixty-seven with the unanimous agreement of the constituency societies. WUSA would not exist without constituencies, and I believe that losing constituencies will threaten WUSA in the long term by having students not feel like they have proper representation in the highest levels of the organization. In the past, WUSA did not have very good relationships with the societies. Previous governance, a previous governance review recommended putting society presidents on board. And while that didn't happen, we did put them on council. That's why we have society presidents he- here in the meeting today. Along with some other changes, society relations have greatly improved since then. Both of the models we are considering would be going back from that, specifically the, you know, having these society presidents on one of our top-level governing bodies. Both of the models we are considering would be going back from that specifically, the, you know, having these society presidents on one of our top-level governing bodies. But like, like I said, putting presidents on council was not the only change. We may that improve society relations, but I do think it's an important change to think about. With some effort, we can probably maintain good relations with societies without their presidents on our highest body, although we should probably consider having them as non-voting members. Um, but if we aren't ensuring that each faculty has a director. Elected by the students of that faculty, then societies don't even have a person they can trust. To, you know, represent the interests of those students and make sure that this, that the societies are at least being treated fairly by WUSA. Since, you know, that director wasn't even elected by the students in that faculty. You know, maybe they'll be able to do their job well, maybe they won't, won't, but they weren't vetted by the students of that faculty, so they can't be sure. If the rest of council disagrees and believes that we should end this long tradition of students electing their representatives by constituencies. In a way that aligns with the university's own governance and the realities of student experiences. Then I ask that we at least present the general meeting with the two options to choose from, so the students themselves can decide how they wish to be represented by WUSA going forward.
Thank you, Counselor Mackey. I see that this has raised a lot of direct responses from a few people. So I guess we are gonna go wait for our hot takes and straw polls and I will let a few direct responses, because I think. That's because I think. We will start with, uh, VP Emo.
I, I, I guess I'm more or less wondering what sorts of decisions, um, you expect to be happening at the. Like board council conglomerate, um, that we're developing, because to me. Um, like your example particularly with textbooks and I, I imagine like a lot of other things, like, uh, let's say we were talking about. Housing, like there's probably differential experiences based on, um. You know, the amount of like money students get from their co-op or like the, like where they tend to live, et cetera, et cetera. That can be divided along faculty lines. Like I see a lot of that sort of discussion and conversation. Um, and fleshing out of those things happening at and like advocacy committee or advocacy committee type level. I just don't really see it as entirely necessary, um, to be bringing in those different standpoints at sort of the board level. Um, so that's sort of what I'm being caught up on. Um, I do agree with your point that, um, like. Historically, faculty relations, uh, when I started at WUSA, then Feds, um, were not particularly great and that having. Um, you know, the, the presidents involved in council and seeing what was going on and asking them to take a lens of. Um, you know, sort of WUSA level, um, instead of just focusing particularly on, you know, what is the needs of their, their societies. Um, you know, that, that was helpful. Um, I think it resulted in more collaboration and more understanding sort of on that front, instead of big WUSA comes to crush you. Um, which I, I know was, you know, it's prevalent every now and then, but it was more, you know, the case before. Um, but I think that there are different ways to, to get around that. Um, I, I think a large part of that is having like. Frequent meetings of cops, um, and fostering a good relationship, um. Like offering resources from WUSA's sort of standpoint and understanding that it's sort of a give-and-take relationship. Um, I'm just not necessarily sure how. I guess these problems get solved by having, um, that sort of representation at the, at the board council level.
Thank you, VP Emo. Just to clarify, are you asking a specification about what? X thinks about the decisions we made at the board level? And if he asks, can you say who that X will be who you want to answer, or is it just a? Rhetorical question that you, you want everyone to think about?
It's a bit of rhetorical question, but I guess also Vincent wants to answer, um, like. What decisions? From your point of view, are you thinking that will be happening at like the faculty council level that you think would necessitate? Um, faculty. Like specifically counts, sorry, specifically society. Or specifically someone very, very in tuned with their faculty, um, to be speaking on.
Winston, I will give you twenty seconds to respond.
So I guess two ways, it can either just be, if board is a rubber stamp, then we need to make sure the board members are at least checking that. What's coming to them makes sense and can go to the committees to check if something is wrong, like if there's missing representation from a faculty, because they realize things coming from. One can, one committee aren't making sense for their faculty. But I guess really, we don't have clarity on that. You're right. I've been kind of operating our assumption that. Board will have final approval on everything WUSA does, um, because that's kind of what I had understood from my discussions with. You know, people like Ben and Matthew. And so I would think would mainly be the making sure that nothing is wrong if it's mainly a rubber stamp for committees. Um, but if it's more expansive, then. I think that strengthens my argument even further.
Thank you. Um, next we have Counselor Yang. Go ahead.
Hi, so I would like to thoroughly rebut concisely some of the points made earlier. My first, the two points I want to go over are the function of having students from faculty and. How affirmative action is still effective in that manner. And secondly, how an appeal tradition doesn't quite. Makes sense or is as logically sound as some people would like it to be. So first off, the idea that the point of having. Faculty representation is to allow for few points from that faculty and to allow the faculty to be feel more connected to WUSA's main governing body. Is also accomplished by an affirmative action model. Students know that there is at least one person from their faculty making decisions. And that if they have concerns, if they're not comfortable going to any of the directors, which they can, they can go to the person from their faculty. I do agree that we have a bias towards our own faculty, but that's not a bias that we need to be perpetuating in our governing structure. Although there is a point made that we should be governing, reflecting the university's governing structure. And that traditionally WUSA slash feds was built off of the society's constituencies. I think appealing to tradition is quite frankly, not really a valid way of making governance changes. We have had a lot of changes since Fed was first established and we've gone through many changes since. If we are appealing to tradition, why don't we just go back to your original model established way back when? We know that that model doesn't work for us and that's why you've changed it. There is an evolution to our governing system and this is. Kind of the next step we need to take as the needs of societies and the relationship has changed. I concur that we've had improvements with faculty relations and society relations, but that is still a long path and much more involved process than simply just having seats. On a governing body. That is something that needs to consider the effort. And I feel that setting us up with this new governing body. Lets us put more effort into those types of topics rather than wasting our time dealing with a lot of administrative work that could be handled through our staff.
Thank you, Counselor Yang. Winston, I'm not letting you have another response. I think we have kind of finished this argument. Last person to speak on this will be Counselor Sharma. And then we will go on to hot takes.
Thank you. So, um, I just, I do agree with the point that faculty, like, uh, the relationship between WUSA and student societies has. Been an issue, at least for science society. I know it's still been an issue, is we do still feel disconnected from WUSA, but less so. Um, even with this current model. So I don't think that an affirmative action. Model is gonna have a negative impact on it. There's, I think, other solutions need to be looked at in terms of improving faculty relationships going forward. And I do think the affirmative action model can have room to improve those relationships. Um, regardless of how the board members are elected. Um, and I do think that is a separate issue that can be resolved in other ways such as. Like, uh. Cops or other methods that we can think of later, but I do think that. WUSA faculty relationships are somewhat of a separate issue.
Thank you, Counselor Sharma. Go ahead, Ben.
Thanks, Canon. I was just gonna suggest before we do like hot takes, focus group kind of questions, I think it might be helpful for us to proceed immediately to a vote. To avoid confusing people before we do that. Um, while the, the, the debate of the three models is sort of fresh in mind as we've been discussing it.
Okay, um, as long as everyone's okay with that. So I guess what we're gonna do is the three models are, we can't explain like the three options that are kind of gonna be there and if I don't answer, let me know. And, uh, we'll try our best to explain it again. The first is the affirmative action model, which is. If at least one person is learning from each faculty, there will be faculty representation on board. Although the people who will be electing all those people will not just be part of your faculty, they will be in the entire student body. The second is the ex officio model, which is that. Each faculty will have a representation on the board and the people who will be electing. Those people will be part of your faculty, but the ex officio model will kind of, the elections for that will happen under societies, in a sense. Uh, and this, when I say societies, I mean the six big faculty societies. And the last is at-large model where. You just, people just run for at-large and every, anyone can vote for anyone. Does that answer your POI, Wiki?
Uh, really? At the dock, so there's option one that says, uh, at-large bottle, and there's option two that says society representation with. Multiple membership classes, and then it says also option two with ex officio. So.
We are, right now, we're not considering the multiple classes option unless council wants us to consider that right now.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
Ben, go ahead.
Thanks, Canon. Just before we do the vote, I wonder if we should decide logistically how we want to do this. Um, I know you want, you say you want to do a roll call vote. I wonder if we should be like asking people to state like a rank preference or. Alternatively, I might suggest because council in February indicated their preference of a hybrid model, so either ex officio or. The affirmative action, if we should just ask strictly between those two, uh, for your consideration.
Catherine, you have a direct response to that. I will let you go till I figure out what I want to do.
Uh-huh, thanks. Um, I think that it would be meaningful to, um, have consideration of all of the options. Just because we have had further debate since last time and we've had further information from the lawyers. Um, I, I think it's valuable to, um, look at all three.
Thank you. So I guess we will do all three. We will go through a roll call vote, but we'll be asking you to rank all three options. I hope Mike is ready to type a lot.
Oh, that's fun. Okay.
Sorry, Mike.
Uh, yes, I am pretty much ready.
Okay, we will start with Amelia Kami.
First preference, affirmative action. Second preference, ex officio. Third preference, at-large.
Thank you. Next we have Andy Ren. Andy? We will circle back to Andy. Next we have Angela Souza.
Andy, Andy wants us to repeat the options, sorry. He just.
So the options are ex officio, affirmative action, or at-large. Do you want to explain them again, or do you just want them to be like said?
Typing up a quick written summary of each one.
Okay. Okay, we will come back to Andy. We will move on to Angela Souza. Angela, if you're speaking, you are muted right now. We will come back to Angela too. Next we have Arunav Gupta. If you're speaking, you are muted. Okay, we will move on to Benjamin Eastern.
Uh, thanks, Canon. My first preference is for the at-large model. Second is affirmative action. Third is ex officio.
Next, we will move on to Catherine Dong.
My first preference is at-large. My second preference is affirmative action. My third preference is ex officio.
Perfect. Next, we will move on to Edward Yang. Uh, Winston, do you have a point of order? Go ahead.
Um, I think the, what Catherine said in chat isn't accurate, that only members of society may vote. Because like we discussed, we can allow all students and the faculty to vote regardless of society membership status.
Point of order, Canon.
Go ahead, Ben.
Um, I, I don't know if we should be considering points during an active vote, and I might suggest restarting.
The word?
Yes.
Okay. Cool. We will begin from the top again, folks. Sorry. We'll start again with Amelia Kami.
First, affirmative action. Second, ex officio. Third, at-large.
Next is Andy Ren.
Sorry, uh, can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, my first option would be, um, affirmative action, second option, ex officio, and then lastly, at-large.
Next will be Angela Souza. And we will come back to them. Next is Arunav Gupta. We will come back to them. Next is Benjamin Easton.
Uh, at-large, affirmative action, ex officio.
Okay, next is Catherine Dong.
At-large, affirmative action, ex officio.
Next is Edward Yang.
First is affirmative action, second is at-large, third is ex officio.
Thank you. Next is Francis Holland.
I agree. Um, first is affirmative action, second is at-large, and then last is ex officio.
Thank you. Next is Saskia and Dylan.
My first choice would be, um, ex officio, second, affirmative action, and third, at-large.
Thank you. Next is Jay Lan.
Quick pause, quick pause, sorry. Jaskerin, uh, you were ex officio, affirmative action, at-large?
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Continue. Sorry, thank you, Canon.
We will move on to Jay Lan. If you're speaking, you are muted. We will come back to them. Next is Marie.
Uh, first choice, affirmative action, second at-large, third, ex officio.
Thank you. Next is Mary.
Affirmative action, ex officio, at-large.
Next is Matthew.
Um, affirmative action, at-large, ex officio.
Next is Nash, Nashmia, sorry. If you are speaking, you're muted right now.
It's in the chat.
Oh, yeah, I can't see participants inside at the same time. Okay. So there, I'll just read the word with ex officio, affirmative, and then at-large. Next, we will move on to. I believe Carolyn Chen is their preferred name. We will come back to you.
Uh, it's in the chat. Uh, so affirmative action, ex officio, uh, third, at-large.
Okay, next we have. Okay, next we have Sonia.
Hey, so my first choice is affirmative action, second is ex officio, and third is at-large. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Stephanie Emo.
Um, affirmative action, at-large, ex officio.
Thank you. Next is Darren.
Affirmative action, ex officio, and at-large.
Thank you. Next is Wiki.
I would like to abstain.
Okay, uh, next is Winston.
First preference, ex officio, second preference, affirmative action. Do I have to give a third preference?
Yes. We are ranking.
Well, if my third preference is nothing, fine.
We are ranking all three options.
Third preference, um, at-large, I guess.
Perfect.
My vote be noted?
I, I think I'm sort of noting everyone's vote, but it's also informal, so I don't really know how that works. But yeah, I'm recording everything to be tabulated, uh, in a little bit.
Thank you, Mike. And I guess we will go back to the people who we skipped before and then come back. Um, Angela, are you here? Nope. Okay, I don't know. Are you here? Nope. Jay, are you here? Nope. And then Carolyn Chen, are you here?
No, Carolyn voted.
Oh, Carolyn voted. Can you just say their vote?
Oh, yeah, it was in the chat. So, uh, Karen was affirmative, ex officio, at-large.
Okay. Um, I guess I'm the last one to give my vote. I will go with affirmative, followed by at-large, then ex officio. And I guess, Mike, the easiest way to do this is first option gets one point, second option gets two, third option gets three, and then whatever the lowest point is, is the most preferred for council at this point. Go ahead, Ben.
You can also do a single transferable vote where you count all the first votes and the one that has the least is eliminated and you go to their subsidiary options, subsequent options.
I think that does too much work for a human being.
Does anything have a majority of first votes first?
I'm checking that first. One second.
If STV is desirable, I'll do it manually.
Only three options, not that much to compute.
This is why we need a math student on the board.
Exactly.
Now, math students can.
So affirmative action was chosen as the first, uh, preference by twelve out of twenty-one people, even though three of those people did not vote. So technically twelve out of eighteen people.
Sorry, Mike. Four people did not vote because Vicky also abstained.
Oh, yeah, sorry, Vicky abstained. Sorry, yeah. Um, so out of uh, twenty-one, seventeen, twelve out of seventeen people selected affirmative action as their most preferred. Uh, I can do the math for the rest, but I feel like that sort of flushes out and nothing else is going to beat it. Unless a lot of people threw affirmative action third, but now checking over again, no one did. So.
Okay, so I guess affirmative action was the most preferred model for council. At least people who are actually here doing their job as representative of their societies and faculties and students in general. Um, okay, next, Mike, you have your hot takes.
Oh, this was just like, they were thought provoking questions of like, how important is it to you that there is at least one person from each faculty on the future body? So that would be like the faculty guarantee sort of thing. And, uh, then, so like, if you want to ponder that, I can also post it in the chat. Or if you want to ask other people to like gather more, um, interest, I will. Oh, no, I'm on a different computer.
That's fine. I will let, what do people think? Do we want to do this?
No, no, I like, they're just thought provoking. They don't need to be answered unless you decide that they want to be.
Yeah.
Um, so that is thought provoking question number one. And then thought provoking question number two. And Vincent raised some doubts about what ex officio voting structure might be, um, which sort of makes me think that maybe he's closer in line to what affirmative action would look like. But anyway, uh, this is what my interpretation of the ex officio would be, that only people from that faculty would be voting for the person. Um, and that is, how important is it that the person who comes from that faculty is elected by only members of that faculty? So the way that I sort of imagine the ex officio model is sort of like how Senate works, whereas like Matthew was a representative on Senate from math, I think, or is Matthew at-large?
Matthew's.
Matthew's at.
I am.
Catherine, sorry, yeah. But Catherine was only elected by math students. Matthew was elected by all students, but they both sit on Senate at the university. So in my mind, that's sort of what the ex officio picture would look like. But yeah, take those questions. Um, yeah, that's all for my thoughts. I'll let you move on.
I think, and just gonna point out one thing, I think based on the current charter, the only way everyone in the faculty will be able to vote for their faculty representative is if, for example, we get NSOC to say architecture students are part of their society, because we don't have different class of memberships as faculties. But we can do that as society, so they will have to like update their constitution, saying architecture can vote in this particular election just for this. Similarly, we'll have to figure out where, um, AFM gets involved, because they are, I don't think they're part of ASCU, they have their own society. Um, but yeah, uh, so there are a few things that we will need to figure out and do with our MOU, so just for people to say. Is there anything else people would like to discuss at this meeting? Which doesn't even happen in general, because this meeting was never actually happened.
Isn't it such a beautiful day outside? Shouldn't we all go outside? I think so.
Waterloo Park. Counselor McCree, you have a one.
Um, I still think that it would be most fair to the students if we present them with both options at the general meeting and just let them know that council recommends one option, but leave it up to the actual students to decide how they're represented.
Um, thank you. Ben, go ahead as your response.
I, I withdraw.
Okay, um, I will let Dr. Vikina go.
Uh, I have a proxy vote for, uh, Joseph Waah, uh, for the rake. Oh, he just wants to abstain too.
Sweet wood.
Uh, Julie Waah?
Yeah.
Just, I don't know if that affects anything. I thought he might have a rake.
Hmm, there, I did, I don't see them in the meeting call right now.
No, no, it's a proxy.
You can't proxy at council, sorry.
If they abstained anyway, it's okay.
Yeah. Okay, so we technically do have more things to discuss about these bylaws unless everyone's fine with the things our lawyer sent us and is okay with maybe the board and the governance committee and the executives making decision on a few things, which based on the current vibe of this meeting where no one's bringing anything else up, people don't care enough about those small issues. Go ahead, Ben.
Yeah, I'll just say, uh, so the next steps for this are, um, so we're, we're hopeful to try to have council approve a set of bylaws uh, by the third of April when we have our regular meeting. Um, so stay tuned for updates. Uh, at the regular meeting of council this month on the twentieth, we hope to have sort of a bit of a report from the executive on how we anticipate advocacy working on the new mo, under the new model. Um, so stay tuned for that. And thank you all for your feedback. If you, um, if you have any questions like arising from the materials that we sent out, feel free to send me an email. Um, and we'll try to get responses from our legal team or from, uh, uh, or the board to consider it, or whatever the case may be.
Thank you, Ben. We have a one from Winston.
Um, I was wondering, does anyone oppose what I suggested of allowing a general meeting to decide with a note of which option council recommends? Or would everyone be okay with that? And also if we wanted to do that like procedurally, how does that work?
Thank you. Ben, I'll let you directly respond. Then Matthew, then Catherine, and then if I think I want to say something, I'll go next.
Yeah, I, I, I do oppose, and I, I dare say I might speak on behalf of the board in indicating that there is a desire to keep the process between these two bodies. The board hasn't formally said anything about that, but like I think it is like a, it's a best practice to like trust the people who are in these rooms right now. We can update the status of the governance review at the annual general meeting, but like, th- there is a reason that counselors have been given this power. The the general meeting will have a place in the ratification of this and, um, of course, members can send like proposals until the eleventh for the annual general meeting. Um, and they'll have an opportunity to do so for the special general meeting in May, um, but it really, it boarding council have been like, are the most aware of what's going on with this, uh, and have spent hours considering it. And I think it makes sense for us to make decisions that we have been empowered to make.
Thank you, Ben. Next we have Matthew.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I agree with, with Ben. Um, I, I've thought about general meetings and sort of um, and when it comes to more complex issues, and I've thought about this with previous issues, I think we've actually discussed this somewhat this year even, about other things early in the year. Um, I, I feel that putting something to the general meeting or to the membership at-large is kind of like throwing our hands in the air and kind of giving up on our own jobs. Like the reason we're here and the reason we spend an inordinate amount of time looking at these issues, uh, is because they're really complex and our students are, you know, really smart, but they don't have endless amounts of time to study the intricacies of governance and grill consultants. And students should be able to trust that we're doing those things for them and we shouldn't be putting like, like when they vote for us to take on these, these sort of tough issues, they can, I believe, and should have faith that council sort of working through that to examine the really nitty gritty details of things to try to figure out what the best path forward on some specific item is, like this one. Um, and that by putting it to the general meeting, the students that voted for us to represent them, um, so that they don't have to get involved, they don't have to do anything. They're not being represented, because now it's, it's it's a what is really honestly a very undemocratic general meeting, or not undemocratic, unrepresentative. Um, because there's certainly a lot of students that are, you know, in circumstances that don't allow them to attend a general meeting. And they can proxy, but students don't want to pay attention to these things, to be honest with you. Um, I, I know, you know, prior to my more understanding of what WUSA was back in my first year, I didn't want to pay attention to these things. And I think that it is doing our students a disservice if we only make decisions on easy things and push the tough things to them. Um, like what the hell are we here for? So I, I don't know. I, I, I've never been quite a fan of like putting complex questions to the general meeting, because like you shouldn't have to study things for eight hours or longer to just like understand that stuff for the vote. You should have, be able to have faith that your counselors, the representatives of the actual representatives, uh, are handling things.
Yeah, like what are we not paid the big bucks for? But, uh, Catherine, next, go ahead.
Thanks. I guess Ben and Matthew said most of what's on my mind. Um, but yeah, general meeting is they, they have power. They have power to turn down anything that boarding council recommends them, and that is a lot of power that they already hold. But the general meeting is not representative. Um, nobody at the general meeting represents anybody but themselves. Um, which is not a bad thing. It's how general meetings are supposed to work, but when we're making decisions like this, where like Matthew said, it involves a lot of studying a concept and understanding what's going on and being part of these conversations for months now. Um, it is, in, my belief is that it's each of our responsibilities as counselors to be making decisions in the best interests of our electors, of our members. Um, and it is irresponsible to to force, um, the general meeting to be the decision maker because you disagree with the decision that the representative body that you are on made. The general meeting is not set up to be representative. It, and it's not supposed to be. Um, so, you know, doesn't make any sense.
Um, thank you, Catherine. And I guess I'll speak the last thing is I would definitely be against this, because then what happens if board is like, we prefer this model, council is like, we prefer this model, and the system gets broken out? Because it's like two different models that be recommended by two different bodies. Two, two people who have never paid attention to our governing system and don't really know what they do. So I'm gonna say let's not do this. Go ahead, Mike.
Um, what I will say for Vincent's sake, um, what has happened in the past when something gets brought to a general meeting? And somebody like sort of is at conflict with the majority opinion of that body. Um, I think one of the examples is when council, when there was a sub faction within council to see if counselors could get paid. Um, this was like four years ago, uh, in the Seneca Valley days. Um, there was a general agreement among uh, the structures of governance that like, it does not, it didn't make sense and like the general thought brought to council was like, it likely would not be able to happen. Um, but then like that faction that was, was pushing for it was allowed to bring up those counterpoints. Um, if they so pleased, but the general recommendation is better if there is one base idea.
Thank you, Mike. If there's nothing else, I will repeat, I guess, then council, but not really a co, meeting of council, because this is an unofficial meeting of council. Um, it's okay with other bodies making decision on minor things that were asked in the law discussions or just recommendations in general, not about the at-large versus affirmative action, but something like there were a few things that they asked us from what I remember when I read their briefs and memos. So I'm assuming you're putting the trust in the executives, board, and maybe the governance committee to deal with that stuff. Going once, going twice, okay. Um, I will not call this meeting adjourned at twelve oh seven PM, because this meeting was never called to order. Um, I guess, Mike, we, we should probably put this up on our, like, we should probably have minutes for this meeting. And I have a disclaimer saying this was a meeting without coram, so there was a discussion happening. And similarly, we should have this in our YouTube or whatever, we post the video saying there was no coram, but there were discussions happening, the people who actually showed up had this final opinion.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye, folks.
I can finally go outside. I'm so happy. Okay, bye, everybody.